Well, welcome to another exciting evening at the Foxborough Planning Board. It being about 7:00 PM, meeting will come to order. Paige, I'll let you get started.
Okay, thank you. So I wanted to bring up the idea of the concept of the upcoming meetings. We, as we all know, on Saturday, the regulations on COVID are changing. Town Hall is planning on Tuesday morning when we walk in. It's, you know, following the state and CDC guidelines. So it's, you know, if people choose whether to wear masks or not, based on the guidelines, how they decide. Same with meetings, the meeting rooms are now going to be open. So I wanted to ask you folks what you thought about the next steps. I know Gary's vote. So I just wanted to touch base with you on our next meeting, I believe it is June 10th. And I am planning later, you'll see my next note on that, but I am planning on having some community participation, so there's a chance that, you know, a handful of people could show up. So just want to know if you guys want to do that in person?
I'm definitely open to doing it in person.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, that's what I figured. I actually told somebody that when they emailed me yesterday, they said, oh, will it be this be in person? I said, yes, and then I wrote back and said, you know, I really ought to wait till the planning board, but I kind of had a feeling you guys would go that way. So June 10th, if you don't mind, I would like to use like the second half at 7:30 on to have our consultant come in. He's from Beta Engineering and I'm hoping he will, I mean, he will come in and present to us the data collection they found about the impacts on COVID on uptown businesses. And then the part of, the exciting part of this is that this is a big program the state is offering, they paid for this whole study. And whatever findings and recommendations we make, we think are going to be setting us up for future funding. So one of the requirements is to hold a community meeting. And I'd like to just kind of incorporate it into one of our planning board meetings, like we'll do a quick presentation and then have a little conversation and go from there. And how do you guys feel about that?
Sure.
Fine.
Good.
Keeps you guys from not having to have another meeting because I know you would all come to that meeting if I scheduled it a different time. So that's, that should be interesting. The fire station project that is still moving forward, I believe the closings are next week. It's really just the attorneys doing paperwork. I just yesterday was able to mail, we had to get title insurance on 17th Centennial and that's been secured, so the deeds were sent off to the attorney. And I think they just get recorded and then that land transfer is now in effect. So basically the ink is dry on that and we're just waiting for the stamp on it. And then over at the fire station funeral home, I know there's been a lot of prep work for this, so they're ready, I mean, the water service was shut off and they've made sure power and all that's been transferred and shut off. And so they, I believe that, you know, the day after closing, they are going to get going right away. You'll see construction fencing going up and it's going to get going quickly.
Hey Paige?
Yes?
Would you mind letting us know when they're going to demolish?
I will, yes. Sure. Do you want to watch? Okay, I agree. Temporary outdoor dining, the other night I went before the selectmen, I had actually submitted a request to make it consistent with the governor's executive order. But then that very afternoon, he went and changed things and filed legislation to extend outdoor dining even later, which is what we were really hoping to happen. So we, we went on the fly and the selectmen have voted to extend it to be consistent with whatever the state does. So I know Governor Baker filed for, I think it was the end of November, not sure anybody will stay open that late, but they'll have the ability to do so if they want. So it's been great. One other thing that's come up though, is that folks feel that outdoor dining, so this flexible outdoor dining has been successful, things like the common, you know, having a couple tables on the sidewalk, or someone else mentioned the 99, you know, they have so much parking out there and they've set up a nice little outdoor area. So there was question of whether the zoning could be changed to allow this on a temporary basis sometimes, you know, as conditions permit. Before that went any further, I figured I should talk to you guys and see your thoughts and whether you thought we should start looking into this ability.
My only concern with that Paige is, aren't there some businesses don't have that option because they don't have the large parking lot, they may be on Central Street? So is that continuing unfair situation for them?
I mean, I don't know that it's unfair, I mean, I don't know that that's unfair or just part of the location. So I mean, I don't know if you punish everybody because of a few, I just, I don't know, that's a consideration, I guess, but.
Yeah, just a thought I had, yeah.
Why can't they do on Central Street, things that they've done in other communities, which is, you know, let them, if it's the pizza place or it's, you know, Goddard Tooties or whoever, you know, the commons, you know, the eatery there, why can't they allow them to like block off some of the parking spaces and put some tables and chairs in there?
Um, I don't know that it's ever been fully vetted. I think, you know, some of the other folks along there, the shops might not like that and the parking is considered at such a premium. But I certainly think, like you say, it's been done other places. I'm sure they have had the same questions and concerns, so.
Well, I guess my big thing is, is like, it depends on time of day that they would be allowed to do that. If they were going to do like, if the commons was willing to go back to have dinner service as an example, you know, the other stores are pretty much closed.
Right, right.
You know, so if there's a couple of restaurants along there that are willing to do, you know, an evening service, then perhaps, you know, they could do that and that they could take the, it would be up to them to decide whether it would be worthwhile for them to do that. Could they make enough money if they could get, you know, four tables or whatever? I don't even know what the number would be, so.
Well, the problem is, is that to put outdoor dining in those locations, you have to have concrete barriers, so you can be able to move those to allow parking on the off times. It would be pretty much be, even though it's temporary, it's kind of permanent for the season.
Yeah, I didn't realize that, okay.
Yeah, the police department, you know, really doesn't want, they worried about people driving.
It's a legitimate concern, yeah.
So yeah. But I do think, I mean, without making any decisions, do you think it's an idea we should explore at least and maybe, you know, talk about and see where it may not, whether it works or it doesn't work for the community moving?
Oh, absolutely, I think we need to explore it.
Yeah, okay. All right, so we'll just keep that and, you know, start looking at, I mean, we don't even know, and I wouldn't be surprised if actually the state does something on their own, because I think, you know, Foxborough is one of many communities that have really, and the citizens really love just the ability. I mean, I don't know if you guys were out today, but I did go to the farmer's market and then I drove by Shovel Town and like, and Conrad's, everything is booming right now. People are so excited, I think, to be out and it was such a beautiful day. So I think, you know, folks really enjoy this outdoor experience.
How'd the Shovel Town thing go?
Good, it looked, it looked like most of the tables or a lot of the tables were full and I didn't see any issues. I went across and just watched for a while. I told Ron I was probably a creepy stalker, but.
I did the same thing.
You did? Okay, good.
I did, I talked to a couple of folks that came out and asked them how it went and they said it was great. They said that, you know, they need more tables, they probably would have done better if they had more, like more tables that were for people versus the bigger tables.
Yeah.
And they said it was expensive. It was like eight bucks for, like 10 bucks for a hot dog or something. And, I mean, first day stuff, like the hot dogs weren't fully warmed or cooked or whatever, but they said it was good.
Tracy, did they open up today under COVID protocols? Like remember how they were talking, they were not going to sit other parties mixed at the tables?
I couldn't, I didn't get, I didn't stare that creepily, but.
I can answer, I mean, I'm pretty sure that right now we're still at the six people per table limit and you can't share tables. I guess to the other point, you know, and that's, but that changes on.
Saturday.
Tomorrow.
Saturday, yeah, Saturday, so Tracy.
I thought that already changed.
It hasn't changed yet.
No, Saturday.
Today is Saturday.
Yeah, so I think there's a slight chance, and I've never talked to them about this, so I have no idea if this is even feasible, because I don't know, you know, whether they bought all these tables, but they can't change the number of seats, but I think they could certainly reconfigure and get like two tops and fours maybe, as long as the net number, because after, after a couple of days, they don't need to respect the six foot separation. So they can kind of move things, they have a little more flexibility, so long as they don't increase the number of seats.
Right, so that, I mean, keep in mind, I mean, it was the first day, so.
Yeah.
They did a soft opening yesterday, just with staff, without serving any alcohol or anything, just so they could get a feel for how it was going to be.
Now, am I mistaken, weren't they supposed to have a tent, a tent over there?
They're still, they're still supposed to have, they changed it from one big tent to four smaller tents.
They better hurry up, we have a lot of rain coming.
That's right.
Well, the irony is the big tent that we all like envisioned was, when we looked closer at it, it was only going to cover four tables. So it was kind of, I mean, even at, it's just silly like to cover that big of an area. So really they're relying mostly on the umbrellas at this point, because there's just no real way to do it.
They're going to be definitely weather sensitive there, so.
Yeah, they're not going to be able to, you know, on rainy rainy days, they probably won't even open, I'm sure, you know, on a light rain, it'll be customer, you know, whoever's willing to put up with it, that type of thing. So they are weather dependent. So anyway, okay, we will continue on the outdoor dining. And then the common traffic pattern, as you all know, there's been a little modification to the common on a trial basis. I did send you the little frequently asked questions thing, and I hope if anybody's watching that they would read that to just understand the background, that we're not crazy and we're not trying to torment anybody, but we're actually trying to respond to a lot of comments that, which is to slow the traffic down and make it more safe for pedestrians. So I was actually up there for the, until a little after five today and I got to tell you, and there were people parked on both sides, parallel parked, and it worked. I mean, it was, and I crossed, you know, several times and I felt it's a lot safer. Now, I know that's not a popular thing and I'm biased, but I've been up there a bunch and honestly, I think it's kind of working. And you know, I know folks are upset about the tractor trailers, but they have to remember two things. Do we really want to make it so easy for tractor trailers to go through Foxborough? I mean, I know some have to, but honestly, we have Route 1, we have 495 and we have 95, why are they going through our little downtown? And number two is the final treatment on that would not be the same, it would not be as vertical, whatever's going to go there is going to be almost flat, because Chris has to worry about tractor trailers, buses and plows. So it's very shocking to see that orange, if you look at the top of the common, you know, you notice it doesn't look anything like that anymore. So I just ask folks to sort of be patient. It actually does work. I don't know that the parallel parking will stay at this point, you know, we all kind of did it to respond to the safety on the other side, but if it's not necessary or if there are other means to accomplish the same thing, we could always, we can always just put it back to angle, so.
Did you, did you see anybody pulling in and pulling out of those parallel spaces? How did that seem to work?
I didn't get to see that, I wish I had, but they were all parked. But what I did see was a gentleman, a man and his wife and two children get out of a minivan parked on the Judy's Floris side.
Yep.
And it was a minivan, so the man got out of his driver's side with all the traffic going by him and went to the minivan sliding door, stood there and I was like, ooh. And he stood there and he was not stressed looking, I was like, I think I'd be freaking out, but he was calm, everything went fine, he got his child down, they walked over to the sidewalk, the four of them went and walked the crosswalk. The most delays I saw today was before, so many people were using the crosswalks that they, everybody had to stop for all the people out walking. Those were the delays, because I'd be like, oh, what's going on? I'd look and be like, oh, it's another family crossing.
So, yeah, I've been running around, like literally on my runs and it's been so much better to cross at the common, so much better.
Yeah, so we'll see, I mean, it's been a little controversial, so, but um, we'll see. And then by way of update, there's something interesting going on with For Annett Road. Remember that project is over off, what is it, Lincoln? Yeah, and it abuts the residential area in Norfolk and the gentleman who's building the industrial building actually lives in the house behind it?
Yes.
Okay, so Norm was out and he came to Gabby this week and said that it appears they're in the building. And so we don't know that there's an occupancy permit and we haven't certainly signed an occupancy permit, so we've let the building department know that and I believe they're working on it, but I just wanted you all to know that, I don't know how anybody can be, if that's true, but you know, and you know, I assume Norm knows what he, you know, he's pretty vigilant and keeps track of things, so Norm's our inspector. But it looks like there's people in that building and there's.
Based on past performance, where he was told he could not cross from the residential to the thing and he did it anyway, it doesn't surprise me that he would possibly be the kind of individual who would feel like, hey, it's my building, I'm going in if I want to, kind of attitude, you know?
Yeah, I know Brian personally and he's been in the building for two months.
Well, that's confirmation for you. So what, what happens at this point Paige?
I don't know, I'm gonna, I'll check with the building department, it's really in their hands, so I don't exactly know. I mean, I know what I would do, but I don't have that, so I mean, I don't, I just don't think that anybody should be in the building, you know, I mean, you can't do, like for insurance, you're in a, I can't even imagine how that's working.
Well, and I can't believe that Barry or someone on the staff wouldn't have been, had opportunity to do interior, you know, checks on the building to make sure everything's up to snuff before they give them, they sign off on the occupancy permit.
Well, I don't, they didn't issue an occupancy permit.
No, I know that, but I'm just saying, the fact that, you would have thought there would have been calls to go in for various inspections because of electrical or plumbing or whatever, and that some report would come back to the department that says, okay, this is, this, we've checked off on this or this or this, you know, what, so they have an idea of what's happening, I would hope.
Yeah, well, there's obviously been some transition in the building department, so I.
Again?
No, no, just in the past few months, you know, since, in two months, you know, we've had a new building commissioner, I mean, he's came, what, six months ago, five months ago, so I mean, but I believe they're on it and, but I just wanted to make sure you all knew kind of that interesting finding this week, so. And then Ron, did you have an update on your site visit?
Yes, I did, I went down to Oilman today and Anthony has, all of the construction equipment has been removed, the property has been fully graded, he has recreated the drainage swale, the existing deep swale on the side of the property, which is almost the size of a retention pond, was being weed whacked today, they put down loom, their seating, they've mulched, the place looks like a million bucks, it really does.
Good.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, that's great, that's great news. So I'm all done with my planner's report and Ron's planner's report.
Well, I do think we should acknowledge Kevin Page's award though, shouldn't we?
Well, we, well.
Absolutely.
So our illustrious town planner has been notified, I don't know whether it was today or recently, that she is going to be given a major award from the Rotary Club for Service to the Community, the Paul Harris Award, which is the top award that they give to people. And we're all very proud of her, I mean, she's, and let me say this, I know Gary said it earlier and other people have written to her, but it is well deserved, because you do, really do yeoman's work Paige. You put a lot of time and effort in, personal time and company time, shall we say, and you really care about it and it shows and you should be proud of yourself.
Here, here.
Here, here, we're very fortunate to have you, not only as our town planner, but as a friend and.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, and I love working with you guys, so.
Well, we are a lot of fun.
Thanks for hiring me. I wouldn't have gotten the award without you.
So Paige, unfortunately, not only did I not get your planner's report, I didn't get an agenda either, so I'm going to have to let you go through the items.
All right, the next thing up for bid is an A and R for 13 to 15 Garrett Spillane Road. And I'm hoping Bill Buckley will email today, because I don't have a plan.
Hey Bill.
Everyone, so I am here, I'm representing the applicant, which is, I don't know what it is, the real name is Deepwater Realty Trust for a Form A on Garrett Spillane Road, and I'm going to share it with you. See if I can find it. Where is it? Ah, there it is. So this is Garrett Spillane Road, which is what we used to call Camp Road, and it comes off of, if you looked on, oh, the lower left corner here, this would be Edwards Road, and so Garrett Spillane Road, it's been built over the last 20 years, it's actually been built in three phases. Planning Board's had some action with it, mainly at the very beginning, the planning board decided what the construction standard was going to be, I think that was around 2000. And then since then, the planning board's inspector, mostly, for the most of the time it's been Norm, has been doing the inspections on the road construction as it's progressed. You've really never seen any, there's never been any other Form As, well, there was one Form A that we created, a lot, but for the most part, these lots existed, they predated zoning or they were created by the planning board, you know, in the 50s and 60s. So what we have here on the end, so I'm going to outline it, this parcel here, it is about, probably almost three acres and it's kind of triangular on the end and it is a large parcel and what the owners would like to do is to subdivide it. And so what we've done, as I stated, the third phase of construction, and we've kind of highlighted here, I know this is a busy plan and hard to read, because there's a lot of easements, permanent easements, temporary easements, which is the way the project was built instead of, you know, under roadway layouts. And so this shade area is this third phase, which we just built, all of this going back to Edwards has already been built, but this has just been built and we're just showing that so you can see where the road was built to. This line here is the new lot line between what we're calling 047A and 047B. Each of the lots contains more than 200 feet of frontage and more than 40,000 square feet of area on the lot. That's, that's really it, it's a, it's a approval not required plan, we believe that we've provided vital access as defined by the building commissioner in his different letters that he's written, in order to allow us to build the project, because, because of the way the law is written, this planning board did not have jurisdiction of this, the building commissioner did, but again, he's been working with the board all through the design and construction phase. So do you have any questions on that?
So Bill, the only question, I'm not sure that it directly relates specifically to the A and R, but I'm just curious about this. So up on lot 047A, you're showing a proposed drainage easement and that will actually, it's on both lots, you know, so is that flowing down by that dotted line into the roadway? Is that how that works?
No, actually, so this road, this, these last two phases of the road.
Yeah.
All drained right about here, this is, this is, this is a low spot.
Yeah.
So what we've done is we've drained the runoff down back here, and you can't see it on this plan, but there's a natural depression back there. So all of this runoff drains from this direction and from further to the west, through a drain, goes this way into this depression where it infiltrates into the ground, the soils up here are perfect beach sand.
Okay, so it's the opposite of what I thought, okay, good, thank you. Anybody else?
No questions.
I don't see any issues.
Norm went up and inspected it and signed off on it, on the road construction.
I mean, it meets all, it meets all the categories, so I don't see that there's any reason that we have to not approve, and I'm open to hearing whatever everybody else has to say.
No, I'm good.
You're absolutely right, Kevin.
I'm fine.
If you, if you back us out, I'll make a motion, if I can see the address, Bill.
The address is, it hasn't been, it hasn't been assigned yet, but we're calling it unofficially after talking to Gabby, 15 and 17.
I make a motion to accept the A and R for 15 and 17 Garrett Spillane.
I'll second that.
Those in favor?
Aye.
You need, you need to do a roll call, Kevin.
Jeff, aye.
Tracy, aye.
Gary, aye. Ron, aye. Kevin, aye.
Good job Tracy, I wouldn't have, I wouldn't have remembered that.
Well, I just want you to give credit to me with Gabby, because she'd be so impressed.
Well, I'm pretty darn impressed right now, so.
I did it last night to Gary too.
Well, I figured if they could see each one of us raise our hand and say, yes, it's the same as the roll call, but I, we'll follow you.
Well, luckily, it's, we don't have to do it after tonight. And that was your last vote, accept adjournment. You could always live on the edge and not roll call vote and adjournment and see what happens, we'd be stuck in a meeting for the rest of town.
Hold on, don't we have something else?
We do, yeah, I wasn't meaning, I mean, that might be our only motion, because the next thing isn't really a vote, so.
So what is the next thing Paige?
Oh, sorry, I forgot.
It's 29.
29 Wall Street, oh, I forgot that one too, nevermind, so you will get to make a motion on this. So 29 Wall Street, as you know, is the project next to the post office, 25 one bedroom apartments, 25 two bedroom apartments, and I think about 4,600 of square, square feet of retail or commercial in the front. The project has been delayed, as you know, and they got an extension last year till June of this year. And Stefan called, now I will go on record as saying that I don't believe that the June of this year expiration would actually be this year, because of the tolling during the COVID pandemic, all permits were told for a certain period. So we do believe he actually has more time, but he did want to talk, let, you know, the board know what was going on and keep everybody apprised and that, you know, he's, he's definitely moving along. But what happened for him is, and I've heard this a lot in the industry, apparently he was at the point of hiring a GC, the GC gave a quote on lumber and when the, then they were getting ready to move forward and then the GC had to call him back and say, I can't honor that quote anymore. And so at this point, I think he said, I can't remember now, if it's 287 or 380, I think it's $287,000 more, the same.
I think it was 387.
Was it 387? I didn't want to hyperbolize, but um, yeah, so 387 more. And the GC can't even lock it in, because it's still so volatile. So for right now, he's unable to sign a contract with the GC, waiting out this sort of thing. So for that reason, he is requesting a six month extension till the end of the year. He hopes to start earlier.
He does, he does have a commitment from his bank, but they won't sign off until he has those, those financials with the construction portion complete.
Yeah, Kevin, you did speak to him.
Yeah, he did call me.
Yeah.
So I mean, I agree with Paige, I think that based on Governor Baker's former thing of tolling, he would have had a natural extension anyway, there was no, nothing, nothing got extinguished. So, but in the meantime, he's being proactive and I think, you know, he seems to be having every intent of moving ahead, I'm sure he would prefer to be moving ahead right now in the construction season.
And the housing market, I mean, let's be real, it's crazy, so, but of course, the lumber is just, is not good. I've talked to so many builders and they're all having, you know, we've had a few of our builders work, you know, a couple of them just sat on their lots for a year, because they just knew they couldn't build the way they said.
I saw developers doing that, they stopped all construction until things settled down, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, my, my husband works in ITV, which is insurance to value, and I mean, lumber has gone from like $2 and cents for a two by four to like 12 something. So what he's experiencing is, it's across the board and it's actually still trending up, so I can understand why the GC won't lock in.
Yeah, lumber guys won't lock into him.
Yeah, exactly.
They give a quote and they guarantee it for five days.
Yep.
So does anybody want to make a motion to grant an extension till the end of the year?
I'll make a motion to extend, extend his permit for the end of the year.
Second?
All those in favor? Kevin, aye.
Tracy, aye.
Gary, aye.
Jeff, aye.
Okay, thank you. Now we have, now we have, where I was jumping, the, an informal discussion regarding an accessory apartment at 20, is that 28, my eyes are really bad, 28 Pace and Road, and we have Mr. Buckley here to present, and I assume the potential users who've been patiently waiting for us to get to them at the end of the agenda.
Yes, thank you very much, again, my name is Bill Buckley from Bay Colony Group and I'm here representing the owner, which is, who's Doug King, but also here, as Paige said, is the potential future owners, Cheryl and Mark Oglier. And what I'd like to do this evening is, is we wanted to bring this before the board informally, because in my mind, this is an accessory apartment on an existing home at 28 Pace and Road. So to orient you on where we are, I'm going to throw up a plane in a minute here, but if you were coming from the pop-up, you'd be going down Pace and Road, past Neff Drive on the left, and it's probably the second or third house on the left, once you get past Neff Drive. And as I stated, Doug King owns that and up until recently, it was being rented by several patriots. And so now what they would like to do is to sell it and build an accessory apartment onto it for Cheryl's parents, Mr. and Mrs. Kelso. And let me put, I want to share the drawing so that you can see why we are here, let's Share. That's not it. Can you guys see that?
No.
Oh.
Nothing.
Nada.
Just your list.
Okay, I'm going to stop sharing and try it again. There we go. Okay. So this is the building. This house was actually built in 2006 and it's an existing house. And let me see if I can move it. So, um, up on the top here would be Pace and Road. You can see it's a front-facing garage. Now, there's a full set of plans that I'll show you, but I wanted to show you the floor plan first. So the existing house is kind of, let me outline it if I can. Is right in here, or let me show you the addition. Maybe not. Let's see. Okay. So if you follow my arrow, so this is the addition. You'd be coming from the front to the left side of the, to the right side of the house. This would be a door. So this vestibule will be, um, added into it. And this would be access to the existing home and then the in-law. So the in-law living area, a kitchen and living area, you'd, you'd be accessing it that way, coming into it. And here's where it gets a difference. This is a, it's, it's not contiguous inside the building. So the kitchen living area would be over here. You would go through this door. This would be a shared den. This has not been built yet either. This would be a shared den that opens up into the kitchen. You can see this is a, an open area. It's not a door or anything like that. It's, would be go through. And then you'd walk through here and this would be the bedroom. And this would be a bedroom, closet, bathroom. And you can see there's no access to the house there. This is currently a bedroom now, a bedroom and bathroom now. Would be expanding it in order to make it, um, bigger. And you can see that, you know, one of the reasons we, we couldn't come in on this side because we have, um, you know, you don't want it, you're not going to come into a bathroom or a closet or a bedroom. So the, the contiguous area or the area that's contiguous, there, there really isn't. It's, this is separate and this is separate. This would be shared and of course the vestibule would be shared. So, and so one of the things that jumps out, I think to anybody, a, a very fair question would be, hey, we have an 850 square foot limitation on an accessory apartment here. But you could look at this and say, well, this and this and this is closer to 1,200 square feet or 1,125 square feet. But again, we think we're showing it, that it is, it is shared space. It's, it's different from what probably anything I've seen yet anyways to come before the board. But it is, I think it clearly meets the criteria, um, that's laid out in the bylaw. And so again, one of the standards, the, the second standard is that, explain how the proposed external changes or additions will blend into the architectural physical style, common materials, color design, that that's obvious. It's along the black, along the back. Further, explain how the accessory apartment shares a common living area separation wall or floor with the principal unit. Now there is direct access between the units. So it, it clearly shares common walls, common areas. It has direct access between the different units, between the shared space and between the, or between the accessory and between the, um, existing or the, what I'd call the, the full house through the use of a, a, the vestibule of course, but also that shared den. So before we moved forward and spent money on engineering and arch, real architecture and stuff, I wanted to see if anybody had an issue with this. I've, I've talked to Paige and Gabby about it. Um, and they thought it would be good to bring it before the board and get the board's take on it.
So Bill, what's in those areas today? And so this in-law living area, kitchen, living, kitchen, living area here, if, as I look at it on the left side, you know, just beyond the shared vestibule. What's there? What's, what's in there today? Is there anything there or are you adding a piece of the building on?
So let me show you again, if you can see my thing. See where, see this dash line? That's a bay window now. So there's nothing below that bay window. This would all be built.
Right.
This right here, the whole den, that is not, not there now is a deck. That would be built. This kitchen living area, all of that is not there today. That would be built and the vestibule will be built. So I have a.
They're going to add, so they're going to have to add a foundation for that area, build it out and then something similar to the other parts when you're moving the fireplace and et cetera.
Yeah, I could show you and here's the architectural, here's the second floor plan. So you can see new roof below, new roof below, new roof below, not adding anything.
Right.
Just adding it below. So this would be.
You're almost doubling the square footage on the first floor, correct?
Um, let me pop something up. The existing building, first floor building is, you're right, Gary, good eye. 1,570 square feet is the current first floor. That doesn't include the garage.
And you're adding how many feet?
Oh, I would say we're adding the kitchen area, living area. And the bedroom is about 848 square feet just below the 850. That's 325. So now you're at 1,175. And then that's 35. So you're, it's, it's over 1,200 square feet.
Right. Right.
If, I think it, one of the things we're always, at least in my mind, looking for is, you know, what's the look? So there's the look and you can see this look from the street. Really all you're going to see is that.
Yeah.
And behind.
Sorry?
Sorry. I checked this out when I went for my run the other day. And behind it is, it's a fenced-in yard. Am I correct?
Yes, and actually it's a, let me share something else, um, with you. I'll show you. It's kind of a different configuration, um, the way the lots are configured.
I did, I did get very excited, Bill, when I saw this, um, address.
Why? Because you like Edelman?
Uh huh.
Yeah, I knew she was going to say that.
No, I know Paige is a fan too.
Not that I don't like the new, the new people.
Well, here's, um, this is the lot, D17A. You can see this was back when it was first built. And this is what Tracy was just pointing out. So this isn't backing up to anybody's house. This is a vacant, kind of an L shape. Um, and really all it's back there is a septic system. And I guess there's a fence back there. I don't remember looking back there.
Yeah, there's a fence.
And this is pretty well, this is pretty well, um, vegetated through this area because I remember looking at it. I actually looked at this house to purchase. So this sits quite a ways back.
And then where's the, where's, where's the access there? Is it all for Pace and?
Yeah, the access is right here.
Yeah.
This driveway and it's a straight shot in. There's a little bump out to it, but it would just be straight in. It's a front loading garage.
Bill, is this, um, zoned R15 or is this part of the overlay district?
This is zoned R15 and it is part of the overlay district.
It is part of the overlay district, alright.
So the question, question, you're, you're probably thinking of Jeff is, why are you here? You know, why are you here? Why don't you just make it a duplex?
Isn't it, isn't it because you've got the kitchen? Otherwise it would just be an expansion of the existing structure, wouldn't it?
Oh, the reason we're here, um, is if, if, because it's R15, this could be a duplex by right. Um, so we, if this was not in the overlay, if this was not part of the state hospital reuse plan, it could be a duplex. But the state hospital reuse plan, as I'm sure at least Kevin remembers, um, all of these lots in the triangle were zoned R15, but in the reuse plan, they had to be single-family.
Yes.
I mean, I, I, I don't see any issue with it because the only other, they can't build on the right because you're, you're not going to have somebody walk in your bathroom or your closet or your bedroom. That'd be weird. And if, 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 if we didn't allow this, they literally would have to come in the vestibule and then there'd have to be a weird hallway.
Right.
Right where the stove, I think that's a stove in the in-law living area.
Well, can I just interject? I mean, I think the, uh, the sort of issue is I, I was wondering, Bill, if you would either talk to one. I don't think you have, or maybe even thought of talking to Barney over it because I'm not sure that this type of shared space scenario was ever envisioned, uh, in crafting this particular, uh, section. If, if you know what I mean. I mean.
I do.
I, I never would have thought of that myself, to tell the truth.
I, I agree, that, which is why we're here. Um, you know, I think our next step would be probably to have a discussion with the building commissioner. Um, but if they, I would hope that one of the questions he would ask, he'd, he'd call up Paige and say, you know, have you guys considered, what does your board say? And then we would, you know, hopefully tonight would get a positive recommendation. I know not a vote. And then Paige could say to, to the building commissioner, yeah, we've looked at this and, you know, it is, it is unique, but it does meet the criteria, the wording of the bylaw. And then, and if he said no, then we would have the option of going to see Barney and getting his, um.
Yeah. It's going to vary. I mean, you know, in terms of, in terms of the use factor, you know, it meets the sniff test. I mean, they're trying to house the parents in the home. It's within the, it's within the envelope. It's a little bit odd because some of it's shared space and the actual living and sleeping areas are separated.
But Paige, uh, do you think that, um, and I'm not suggesting it would necessarily have to be done for this application. But I would think, uh, going forward, once we've opened this particular door, that we'd probably need to do some modifications to the bylaw specifically to deal with the shared space issue. Am I wrong about that?
Um, we certainly could. Yeah.
Well, just because you've got, you're going to have to have some sort of, uh, uh, parameters for what, you know, how would that, you know, be allowed? To what degree, what percentage perhaps of the, you know, the total new square footage, anything like that? Because certainly if this goes, there probably would be others because there's certainly, like this particular situation, it's very difficult to do what would be a more conventional, um, application for, you know, a two, not a two-family, but an in-law type situation.
Right. No, I hear what you're saying and it may be, but you know, it's so hard to do every eventuality. And honestly, um, you know, I think the, the size limit is kind of the controlling factor. Um, beyond that, I mean, you guys know how I feel about housing and the fact that I've spent my last two years immersed in it. And when I look at something like this, it is so incredibly benign to the town of Foxborough. In fact, like, because they could add this addition to their house by right and live in a larger house.
Correct.
Um, the benefit to the town of Foxborough is growth. You're getting tax revenue on a much higher, higher value home. Um, the exterior is not being altered. You're allowing, you know, a young couple to move in and, and help out their families, which is really what Foxborough is all about. So in general, I would like to see the future, you know, accessory apartment, maybe have some flexi, not flexibly, but like, I think this is where this board comes in, you know? As Kevin mentioned, the sniff test or whatnot. I just think that, um, you know, this is something, this is, this is family. This is housing. I mean, look at the cost of housing these days and look how hard it is. I don't know if you guys could afford to buy a house right now, but I certainly couldn't afford to buy my home. So I think this is just an example of how creative folks are getting. And I just don't even see the harm, like even if it's loosening something or whatever. And so I, I guess you could tell. And I, at first I was a little weirded out by it, but then I stopped to think of like, who is it hurting?
It's hurting nobody. I don't mean to interrupt you Paige, but I just want to say I'm 150% behind everything you're saying. Uh, you know, this absolutely passes the sniff test. It, there's no negative impact to neighbors. It, bringing in more revenue for the town. It's encouraging young families to buy homes and make it affordable.
Well, not just encouraging, but probably allowing them to because now they have an added supplement to their income to help them afford these places. So I look at it that way. Now, this, this unit is unique, but I think it, like you said, it, it fits the sniff test, um, passes it. It, it, it's also, what's the word I'm looking for? Um, it, it, it's unique, but it works. It, it meets the, the intent.
Yeah, exactly. That's what it is, Gary. It meets.
It's the intent that we've always planned.
Yeah. Well said. I, I give it an unambiguous thumbs up.
As do I.
Uh, one more time, I don't disagree with any of that. But going forward, I don't know that the town wants to get, because there's a certain subjectivity that would be applied on this. When you say it passes the sniff test, that's kind of subjective. You know, Kevin's sniff test might be different than mine, might be different than Peter Butter's, you know? And so I'm just, I'm not saying that I wouldn't support this particular application. I just think that we need to, we would need to, Paige, I think going forward, take into account in a codified way, how scenarios like this would be considered and what some standards would be.
But how, but how do you do that? Because how do you plan, like, what do you mean? Because how do we plan for every eventuality?
I'm not saying that what I'm talking about, this, the issue of shared space alone is something that can be quantified and standardized. You know, you could actually, you could actually write that in, no, whatever the, you know, it couldn't be more than just say, for example, 33% of the total accessory addition. You know, shared space with you or whatever. I'm just putting that as an example.
I would agree. It might be helpful to have that conversation in the future, but I don't think it's.
I agree.
I don't think we have to, to restrict this project because of that.
No, I'm, I'm not saying that we should.
I will definitely mention it to Barney and duly noted.
Yeah. Okay.
So I'd be supportive, I'd be in support of it as well.
Ron?
Yeah. I mean, it's very different, but it is, you know, things can change.
I'll miss Edelman though, but Mark, I don't know your wife's name, but I'll still wave.
Doug will miss him.
Doug, Doug will. He'll sit out front. Don't you worry.
I didn't know this was Edelman's house.
Doug King will not miss him.
I gotta tell you, I was, I went, Gabby gave me the address so I could check it out and I'm running by and I text Gabby. I'm like, oh, it's, it's Edelman's house. She goes, yeah, he moved out. I was like, but I'm very happy because Mark and his wife look very nice and I'm sure they have a great family. And just remember, if I'm lying horizontal on the road, just call 911, please.
Well, thank you very much. I think we have the input that we need and, um, we'll move forward and hopefully see you very soon.
Pretty good.
Are you new, are the, are the homeowners new to the town?
Cheryl, you want to tell them where you live?
Nope. Um, I live at 8 B Shea Lane. I went to, uh, Shovel Town today. I went to the farmer's market today.
Well.
The parallel park.
We parallel parked today.
And how did it go?
It was okay.
Okay. Well, you're better than me because I can parallel park, but you know, throw, thank you for coming in front of us tonight.
And it must be nice to be able to move out of your car and move into a house. Took her a minute. She was at the box.
This is where we are now.
Yeah, that's where. They're still at Shovel Town, Gary. They just don't want to admit it.
All right, well, I'll, I'll be down there in 20 minutes. Okay.
I have another meeting I have to attend next, so.
Well, sticks to be you.
Oh, uh, hey buddy, go to Shovel Town. I'll see you there.
Okay.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin, that was the last item on our agenda.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Just have a powerful thirst, Tracy.
No, I. My company, uh, we close tomorrow for employee wellness day.
I'm making my guys work like 12 hours tomorrow.
I'm the only one in the office tomorrow. Everybody's on vacation.
Second to that motion to adjourn?
Aye, second.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Tracy, aye.
Evan, aye.
Aye.
Bye, guys.
Bye.